Okay, hello everyone and good evening. It's 7 o'clock PM. I'm the Deputy Town Clerk Amanda Kurtz. Before we get started, I have a few announcements. Tonight's regularly scheduled Herndon Town Council work session is a virtual meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3708.2 as amended, the Governor's Executive Orders as amended, and in accordance with Ordinance 20-023, continuity of governmental operations during pandemic disaster COVID-19 as amended and be adopted by the Herndon Town Council on September 8th, 2020, which supersedes previously adopted amendments. Proper notice of the electronic meeting was provided in accordance with the Code of Virginia. Agenda and meeting materials, along with information for viewing the meeting and submitting comments for the record, are available on the town's website. The meeting will begin with a roll call to determine a quorum, and all votes, including adjournment, will be by roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Amanda. I will call the meeting to order, the September 22nd Town Council meeting, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. And also ask that everyone turns on their cameras. Thank you.
Town Manager?
Ashton, present.
Town Attorney?
Yates here.
Olum?
Olum, present.
Baker is absent this evening. Delagula?
Delagula here.
DeCall?
DeCall here.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, present.
McKenna?
McKenna's here.
Merkel?
Lisa Merkel is here. So for the record, we do have a quorum electronically. We have two sets of minutes up for approval this evening. Is there a motion to approve the September 1st work session minutes?
So moved. McKenna?
Second. Signe.
Is there discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olum? Oh, sorry, Sheila.
Olum, yes.
Thank you. Baker is absent. Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel? Merkel, yes. That passes 6 to 0. And is there a motion to approve the September 8th public hearing minutes?
Olum moved, September 8th.
McKenna will second.
We have a motion made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Discussion on the motion? Okay, then I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olum?
Olum, yes.
Baker absent. Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. And that motion carries as well. I will recognize our Town Manager, Bill Ashton, for any comments this evening. Mr. Ashton?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just continuing what we discussed last week related to the COVID-19 pandemic, Fairfax County is still experiencing a low disease burden. The trends are fluctuating, so they're up for a few days or down for a few days. They are still characterizing community transmission as being low. So minimal increases across the board. But interestingly, I got something earlier today from the Northern Virginia Regional Commission. They posted a new dashboard for the region, and it's still some very troubling statistics, demographic trends in the numbers. Right now, Hispanic are overrepresented in the, overrepresented by their portion of population by a factor of three. So where they make up like 17.8% of the population, you're like 50, 59% is what the number they're showing as far as the 59% of infection rates. African Americans are also very much overrepresented as well. Interestingly enough, the key drivers right now in the age demographics are the 20 to 29-year-olds. They are way up, followed closely behind by the 30 to 39-year-olds. So you're looking between the 20 and the 40 age range is, seems to be driving the numbers. 10 to 19, still very low. And actually, you're seeing some low numbers in some of our elderly population, which is actually a very good thing. So right now, it seems to be the 20 to 40-year range is causing a lot of the issues. As from the town's perspective, we are still engaging in our Virginia Occupational Safety and Health Training. We, I participated in creating a video, as did a couple other key staff earlier this week, that all employees will have to watch regarding their responsibilities in the workplace to protect themselves and their coworkers, and what we're going to start enforcing at a higher level. Things like mask wearing if you are up and away from your desk or in a vehicle with other people, items like that, where we had been doing it, but we hadn't been putting teeth behind it. Now we're going to start really supervising that much more closely, and that's in line with what the state is asking all employers to do across the way. As with all of these conversations, I'd just like to remind everybody, continue to wear masks, continue with the six-foot distancing, continue to wash your hands and sanitize your hands frequently, and if you're sick, isolate yourself and seek testing. And if you are, if you've been exposed to somebody positive, quarantine yourself and to see if you have any symptoms and then seek the testing. But this is, across the board, I think we, Northern Virginia as a region has done fairly well in this, and that is one of the reasons why we have the numbers we have, which according to Dr. Gloria are low with a, with a low community, low burden with a low community spread. So, but still, we can do better, and we need to continue to focus on those, those things. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. What questions do we have for the Town Manager? Anybody? Mr. Delagula, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Delagula. Bill, thanks for that update, and just, I know it's going to be coming up soon here, and the whole talk of masks. Any guidance on Halloween or trick-or-treating, or, you know, should we be encourage people to stay away or literally wear masks? I mean, it's just, it's a good, good chance to give some guidance here.
Right. And by the way, masks with holes in the mouth are not the mask we're looking for. So, actually, the Fairfax County Health Department is putting out guidance on it. I will, I will get it. I will make sure it gets posted on all our social media and all of our media channels, and I will be announcing it probably starting next week, once we get into October, or actually week after next. Once we get into October, that'll be a routine part of my spiel when I talk about COVID.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Well, on Halloween, I can say that the island has decided we're not doing the haunted island, because we usually have between 300 and 400 children come through. So we made our own decision, and we'll put that up, but good idea. The other thing, I was wondering, Mr. Town Manager, have you seen, or has our staff seen, our trash being way more than normal? Because I know in Baltimore, they're really experiences high amount of trash because everyone's staying home.
Actually, it hasn't been that bad. As a matter of fact, that's one statistic you'll hear later in my State of the Town Report, I'll talk about refuse, but it was, it was the opinion that it's roughly about normal. We've seen greater water usage and greater sewer usage, but the trash seems to be somewhat stable. For a while there, early on in the pandemic, we were seeing a lot of recycling, cardboard boxes, because you're getting Amazon in, everybody's getting everything shipped to them. So we saw a large uptick in the weight because of the cardboard boxes in our recycling. But as far as refuse itself, there hasn't been much of a difference.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Manager, COVID-related? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Town Manager. That brings us to comments from the council. Who has comments for us this evening? I usually go down the dais, but I don't know if I should do that here. Anyone? Ms. Friedrichs, and then I saw the Vice Mayor's hand.
The sad thing is that I was actually adjusting my glasses, but since we're back in relatively normal subject matter, I just wanted to remind people that from September 15th to October 15th, it's Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage listeners to learn more about their own history and the history of others if they're not Hispanic. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you. For all those folks listening at home, a reminder that the fall cleanup is October 21st through the 23rd on your trash day. So my favorite, one of my favorite things, we stretched it out in the spring, but the town took care of us. But this way, people can put stuff out, so if other folks are looking to refurbish it, maybe it'll get picked up and not go to the landfill. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Anybody? Mr. Delagula?
Some other comments, just if there was an update, if now's the appropriate time for the discussion we had on the work session on the marijuana cases.
I'm not sure if there's an update. I'm looking at the Town Attorney.
I included an update in the dispatch that went out on Friday. Did you, perhaps, did you want something other than that?
Is that for public disclosure?
You can, sure.
Well, can you just give us a quick?
That particular portion of it.
Could you just give us an update?
I wasn't prepared for that, but I would say that the, as you know, the General Assembly...
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I apologize for that.
General Assembly, I can do it. That's fine. The General Assembly, in its regular 2020 session, passed a, and I don't have the bills in front of me here, an amendment, legislation amending the Code of Virginia to make possession, simple possession of marijuana a civil offense. If that became effective July 1st of this year, so prior to July 1st, it was still a criminal offense. If you received a, if you received a violation that was before July 1st, it would still be prosecuted as a criminal offense, following the institution of the new laws, making possession a civil offense. It's a $25 fine if you are found to have possessed, to have simple possession of marijuana. The question was, what were we, were we still, I think last week, were we still prosecuting simple possessions? And in my, as I addressed to you, we didn't, we, as the town, or the town prosecutor is not involved with prosecuting marijuana offenses anymore, because they are civil offenses now. They go directly before the judge.
Okay. And I assume you spoke with the Commonwealth attorney on that?
I spoke with our prosecuting attorney, Kate Fitzgerald, regarding what Herndon was doing, yes.
So it's my understanding, and again, I'll apologize if I'm understanding this incorrectly. It's my understanding that we are still prosecuting those cases, we are not dismissing those cases here in town. And the ask was to validate, verify if in fact that is what the Commonwealth attorney was doing, and if we were also filing, following that process or that direction.
So I am verifying that they are no longer prosecuted as of July 1st by, in the town. They are civil offenses, they come directly before the judge.
Okay. And to be clear for anyone that's listening, sir, prior to July 1st, those are still treated as the offenses prior to the July 1st decision.
Correct. That's the state of the law, if there are any of those even left.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? So I just wanted to quickly share something that's sort of a grassroots thing that's happening. As you know, Fairfax County Public Schools is fully virtual, and there are many families in the Herndon High School Pyramid and the South Lakes Pyramid who are in need of desks, workspaces for their children. So some moms have formed a kind of an ad hoc group of people trying to collect desks and deliver them to these families who need them, or in touch with the schools. So if you are cleaning out your basement, or see any, have access to a small, especially a small desk, I mean, in fact, one of the, the principal at Clearview indicated that the folding TV trays that you often have are a great fit for a lot of families. So anybody out there, or anybody on council, would be interested in donating a desk, or you have something to contribute, or you're willing to deliver, get in touch with me, and I'll connect you with the right people. I can be reached at my email, mayor.lisa@herndon-vaa.gov, or you can call me at 571-449-7121. And I think already we have delivered about 30 desks to families, so, anyway, I wanted to share that with you guys. So that does bring us to comments from the audience, guys, finally, after all this time. I have a bunch of stuff to kind of read into the record, so this is our first comments from the audience portion that we have had since we have gone fully virtual. I'll outline the process for WebEx. Tonight, we are using a speakers list to call on those who have registered for comments from the audience to address council on any matter that's not listed as a public hearing item, and that would include anything on the general items or the consent agenda. I'll call on each person that signed up to speak, and we'll announce the name of the next speaker. Please be ready when it's your turn to speak. We'll pause briefly while IT enables the speaker's ability to address the council. Speakers have up to three minutes and should state their name and address for the record. Comments from the audience are limited to 45 minutes or approximately 15 speakers. We would love to have the problem that we have too many speakers. So if you're watching and you didn't sign up to speak, please consider participating in our next work, at our next public hearing. The timer will appear on the WebEx screen, and so when you see 30 seconds are left, please try to wrap up. If staff sees that you're having trouble connecting or any other technical issue, the clerk's office will contact you to add your comments to the record. So with that, I believe we have two gentlemen who've signed up to speak this evening. First, I will call on Stephen Porter, followed by Ken Wire. Please, when, when you are enabled, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening, Mr. Porter.
Good evening. My name's Stephen Porter, and I live at 905 Vine Street in the town of Herndon. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Ashton, Chief de Board, Ms. Herndon, and the other staff for the Herndon Police Department's 2019 Annual Report. It provides some great insights into the outstanding work our police have been doing. As a data guy, I was particularly interested in the various statistics on incidents, use of force, and disciplinary investigations. While the report is useful, I believe a key demographic is missing. Unlike the Fairfax County Police Reports, the Herndon Police version did not include a breakout for Hispanic or Latinx populations, which form a significant part of our community. I would ask that, if possible, a supplemental report be issued that includes that data. It also should be included on all future reports. The other item I had questions about and have not been able to find information on is the chief's advisory committee mentioned on the HPD website. In particular, I cannot find anything specific about it, who is on it, what they have done, agendas, et cetera. As I'm sure you are all aware, community oversight of police departments is a major topic right now, and I would really like to learn more about this feature of HPD's governance model. If someone could point me to the information, or better yet, link it more clearly on the website, that would be very helpful. Again, I want to thank Chief de Board and the Herndon Police Department for their service to our community and for an informative annual report. I will email the clerk a copy of these remarks for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter, and we will get some answers to you when we get that email through the clerk's office. Appreciate you bringing up those points. I believe that next up, we have Ken Wire.
Ken Wire with the law firm Wire Gill. I may have signed up in error. I was intending to speak or answer questions about the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the Affordable Housing Project of 315 Eldon. So I can do that later, if that's the intent.
Okay, certainly. We weren't sure if you wanted to speak as a general comment, or you will be here available for questions from council?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, then, we will enable you if that comes up later. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So I thank you again to everybody who signed up. We are all encouraging members of the public to sign up, and when you register to take part or to watch this via WebEx, it's the same form, you just click that you'd like to speak, it's super easy. So looking forward to hearing from more of you at our next work, or I keep saying work session, at our next public hearing. So we will now move right into our public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask if the town's clerk's office has received comments for the record, or any transactional disclosure declarations from council on any of the items that are listed on the, on the agenda this evening.
Sorry, I turned one page too far. This is Madam Mayor. Comments were received on General Item Number 10, Resolution 20G45, initiating consideration of an amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, and no disclosures were provided by council on any item listed on the agenda this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. So our first public hearing tonight is Ordinance 20051, to approve the conveyance of a power utility easement by quitclaim deed to Dominion Energy Virginia for transportation facility improvements for the Van Buren Street Improvement Project on the property that is owned by the trustees of St. Timothy's Episcopal Church at 432 Van Buren Street. The public hearing is open, and I will recognize our Deputy Town Attorney, Lori Sigler, for the staff report, and our, John Irish from the Department of Public Works is also available if there are questions. He may have additional information. Ms. Sigler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the Town Council. This is Lori Sigler, Deputy Town Attorney. I'm here to talk to you about three easement matters this evening. The first one, the, a conveyance of an easement to Dominion Energy by quitclaim deed. Next slide, please. The easement at issue for this item was actually acquired by the town as part of the Van Buren Street Improvement Project, which, the project is between Spring Street and Herndon Parkway, that shown with the red line along Van Buren on the slide. St. Timothy's property is marked with the blue star, so it has a rather large frontage along Van Buren Street. The easement was acquired by certificate of take that the town filed back on February 20th, 2020, and we also acquired a couple other easements at the same time. All along, this easement was being acquired to eventually be conveyed back to Dominion. Next slide, please. So the easement is an area of 14,362 square feet that appears in the yellow on the plat, and the, again, the town paid the property owner for all of the easements, including this Dominion easement. And again, now, it's a simpler process for us to acquire all the easements, pay the property owner, and then in this case, we convey the easement out to Dominion. And that is all I have, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. What questions do this council have for, I'm sorry, I'm trying to flip the panel, there we go, for Lori Sigler, or for John Irish, who's also available if we have questions for him? Ms. Friedrichs?
Ms. Sigler, this is Signe Friedrichs. I just want to establish that we are in, if we adopt this ordinance, we are completing a transaction that we began, that was a series of transactions that we began earlier this summer, this will complete that transaction with St. Timothy's property. Is that correct?
This is Lori Sigler. Yes, Councilman Friedrichs? We acquired Dominion easements on other properties along the same, the same street frontage. Last month, we had several of those on the agenda, and this was kind of a holdover for that same project. So this will be the last Dominion easement that's part of the Van Buren Street project that we'll be conveying, quitclaiming to Dominion.
So at this point, the project will be completely able to go forward?
Right. And currently, it's actually in utility relocation. So you'll see work out there on Van Buren, that's the various utility companies, Verizon, Dominion, and there's many others, completing the relocation so that the project can be bid, and then the actual road construction begin at a later date.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. What other questions do we have for Ms. Sigler or Mr. Irish? Okay. So this is a public hearing, and I will ask our town clerk if anyone has signed up to speak on this item.
No, Madam Mayor, there are no registered speakers on this item.
Thank you very much. So with that, then I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. Madam Vice Mayor?
Olum speaking. Madam Mayor, I move Ordinance 20-0-51 for approval.
Second, this is Friedrichs.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. Is there discussion on the motion? Yes, ma'am, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes. And while all the other properties were basically owned by individuals, there were a couple of others in trust, but they were family trusts, this one was much more complicated. And I know that St. Timothy's was looking forward to working with us on this, and if anybody drives down Van Buren, you'll see that the poles have already been moved to where they had that asphalt walking path on the, on the St. Timothy's property. So it's looking exciting, and I can't wait to see them move the wires over. I think I'm going to spend the day over there just watching that. I love to watch the construction jobs being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Anyone? Okay, thank you. Well, then I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olum?
Olum, yes.
Baker's absent. Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. So that motion carries. Thank you, everybody. The next item is Ordinance 20052, to approve the conveyance of a power utility easement to Virginia Electric and Power Company, Dominion Energy Virginia, at the Herndon Parkway and Van Buren Street intersection, known as Haley Smith Park. That's 320 and 324 Van Buren Street. Transportation facility improvements are associated with the Van Buren Street Improvement Project. The public hearing is open, and once again, I'll call on our Deputy Town Attorney, Lori Sigler, for the staff report.
Thanks again, Madam Mayor. This is Lori Sigler, Deputy Town Attorney. We're staying with the same road construction project, the same CIP project for this matter, although this is actually town-owned property. Dominion needs a power utility easement over a portion of the Haley Smith Park property in order to put some additional street lighting along that portion of Van Buren. Next slide, please. And before I get started, I did want to remind council that, as I mentioned in the work session, you have now received an updated ordinance, the square footage of the easement has actually changed from the initial work session package. So the ordinance you have now clearly reflects and correctly reflects that the easement being conveyed contains 7,235 feet, and there is a new right-of-way agreement, and more importantly, plat that is also, was also part of your packet. The location of the easement was, it's generally the same location through some of our engineers, we just have a more accurate location now on the plat that is reflected in your, in your packet. So once again, this is the same slide that I used for the last presentation, although you can see, hey... you can see Haley Smith Park here is marked with the blue star right at the corner of Van Buren and Herndon Parkway. Next slide. You can see this is an engineering drawing from our engineer that show the hatched pink area containing the easement, which again is 7,235 square feet. This easement is going to convey our rights in the easement to Dominion for a period of 40 years. Pursuant to the Virginia Constitution, Section 9, Article 7, towns cannot convey an interest, an easement for greater than 40 years. So by the terms of the right-of-way agreement, it'll automatically expire after 40 years unless the town affirmatively adopts the easement for another definite period of time. Next slide. This is the actual plat that will be attached to the right-of-way agreement with Dominion, with the easement area here highlighted in yellow. And that is all I have, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. And I neglected to mention that John Irish is also still available if the council has questions that would fall in his purview. So are there questions for Ms. Siegler or Mr. Irish? Okay, seeing none. This is a public hearing, and I will ask once again the town clerk if we have anyone signed up to speak on this item.
No, Madam Mayor, there are no registered speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action. I'm sorry, Madam Vice Mayor.
Madam Mayor, this is Olem. I move Ordinance 20-0-52 for approval.
Is there a second? Mr. McKenna?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. So we do have a motion to approve made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Is there discussion on this motion, anyone? Okay. Then I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker's absent. Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. That motion carries. We have another public hearing following. It's Ordinance 20053 to approve the conveyance of a communication system utility easement to Verizon Virginia LLC. This is at Herndon Parkway and Van Buren Street intersection for the transportation facility improvements associated with the Herndon Parkway and Van Buren Street intersection project. The public hearing is open, and I will recognize the Deputy Town Attorney Lori Siegler once again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the town council. This is Lori Siegler, Deputy Town Attorney. We are now moving a little further north on Van Buren Street and across the intersection. Again, we're talking about a piece of property that's owned by the town. It's currently a vacant parcel. Next slide, please. Here is the intersection with the town property, again marked with a blue star. It sits right next to the Metro Square condominium project. That's actually, we acquired this piece of property from, as a part of the project. Again, it's currently vacant, and there currently does exist a Verizon box that is on the town property. The reason we need this new easement is that utility box has to be relocated on the town property in order to accommodate some of the improvements that are coming with the intersection project. There's going to be a sidewalk and cycle track along both sides of our property at the corner, which makes, again, the need to move these utilities. We are not being compensated by Verizon for this because it's an accommodation, again, that we need in order to make our CIP project move forward. Next slide. Again, I had a slide in here. We did see other matters in regards to the intersection project, so I think the council is pretty familiar. This is going to be a key link to the metro station, relieves congestion, and will also provide some needed stormwater management improvements and have the cycle and pedestrian improvements as well. Next slide. This slide shows the, all of the property interests that we needed to acquire as part of the project. You had, those matters had come before you last month or the month before. The area on the town property you see is highlighted with that bright pink magenta color. The easement is going to encompass 468 square feet. And next slide. And the actual easement plat that's going to be attached to the easement agreement, you see here on this slide with the easement area, again, highlighted in yellow. And this easement will also be limited to the 40-year term, similar to the Dominion easement. And that is all I had, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. What questions do we have for Ms. Siegler or for Mr. Irish? Anyone? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. This project has been a long time in the works, and one thing, possibly Mr. Irish or maybe even Mr. Town Manager, can you just remind us how much is being paid for on this project, on these improvements? Because I know our staff has worked really hard to put together transportation, grant money, et cetera.
If I can, John, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Could you take a stab at that? I don't have it on the top of my head. For once, I don't have a number on the top of my head.
There you go. This is John Irish, Deputy Director of Public Works. Vice Mayor, is the question regarding the overall cost that's going to be involved with the project?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The overall cost is obviously going to be determined by our bids, but the estimate that we have, that we're working with and what we've been funding towards is approximately 5.6 million.
And what percentage of that are we having to pay for?
I...
20%, 30%, something like that? Or not?
I would say it's probably closer to 20% or maybe even a bit less than local funds. The majority of the funds are either through Virginia Department of Transportation and federal funds, and we also have some NVTA funds involved with this project.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the public heard because it is taking a long time to put this project together, but because it is a huge transportation issue, and we've gotten most of it paid for, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, you're muted.
It was bound to happen eventually. I apologize. This is a public hearing, so I will ask the town clerk if we have anyone who has signed up to speak on this item.
No, Madam Mayor, we do not have registered speakers on this item.
Okay. Thank you. So I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, move approval of Ordinance 2053.
Second, Olem.
All right, I can't keep up with you guys. All right, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. Delagula, seconded by Ms. Olem. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Delagula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Delagula. I bike by this just about every other day, and although it's going to be a little bit inconvenient for some folks that I know, it's going to be worth it. I think the town will be better off the whole strip of Van Buren there. I'm really looking forward to all this, so I just want to say to the cyclists out there, feel your pain, but be patient, and it'll be better.
Thank you. Ms. Olem or anyone else?
Yes, Olem. And if you're driving, I just go drive down the road just to see the progress, and I'm just jumping up and down every time I do it. And I want to take pictures, but because I'm driving, I don't. But I'm so excited about this. This should have been happening back in 98, so I can't wait. It means Metro's almost here.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Yeah, I agree with the Vice Mayor. I remember one of the first public hearings that we had back in 2010, when Sheila and I were first elected, was about the bicycle plan and trying to become more bike-friendly, and it was a struggle. And to see this project on Van Buren Street finally to the point of these conveyances of property to get these easements and actually see progress is really exciting, and even better that we've got staff who work so hard to get those grant-funded projects for us. And I'd forgotten about NVTA. I'm glad you mentioned that. I remember going and begging them for this money several years ago. So with that, if there's no further discussion, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, yes.
Thank you. Baker's absent. Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. So that motion carries as well. That brings us to our general items, and so hopefully I will be a little smoother since I'm not juggling so many scripts. The first item in our general items tonight is Resolution 20G39 to accept the state of the town report for fiscal year 2020. Every year, we have to accept this in September, and the town manager is here, ready to enlighten us on what a year it has been.
All right. Just if you could put my PowerPoint up and promote Jenny. Oh, I see you've already done that. What we're going to do tonight is, this presentation is going to cover a couple areas. One is obviously the operational elements that occurred last year, but then we're going to pivot halfway through and give you an update on what the end of the FY20 finances look like, which I think is a critical part of this report. And then also Jenny will touch on where we're looking so far in '21, and then we're both here available for your questions. So with that, Jess, slide please. As you're aware, the town charter mandates that I provide to you, and what strikes me in this code language is a concise, comprehensive, those two things seem to be kind of in conflict with one another, especially when the report we give you is 88 pages long, so that the report itself is 88 pages. Historically, we have also released a trifold glossy that goes to every home, that hits the highlights. Because of the fiscal situation of the town and the uncertainty that we're going to talk about here later, we are not doing that this year. There will not be one of those glossies going out. But that said, it doesn't diminish or dampen the amount of really quality work that staff had done this year. Jess, slide please. So really, this, you know, you've, everybody's heard of the Dickens book A Tale of Two Cities. Well, this was a tale of two years. There was a pre-COVID year and a post-COVID year. There was, and when COVID hit, it really spelled a seismic shift in our focus and in our mandates and what we had to get done and how we had to do it. So this presentation, or at least my portion of it, is going to really look at both sides of this. So in the pre-COVID world, we were looking at things like downtown redevelopment, those capital improvements to include those road projects that you're talking about that are going to be, and I couldn't agree with you all more, these are going to be wonderful upgrades for pedestrians and cyclists along Van Buren Street and down to the metro. These are a long time coming. I was, when I first took over this job, I was excited to start working on these projects so we could deliver them. And so that was at the core of our focus earlier in the fiscal year. We were advancing our 2035 vision in various ways, and then we were conducting our normal operations, the things we do day in and day out. But then, once COVID hit, it truly changed dramatically, like it did for many other organizations. It focused us on the core town services. It focused us, focused our attention on making sure that we were protecting our employees, and we were focusing on protecting the public. And then we also had that fiscal uncertainty element that was out there that was always at the fore of our minds since the outset of COVID, and we had to prepare for that as well. Jess, slide please. So in the pre-COVID19 world, as we talked about, we did, we were doing a lot of work with Comstock to prepare to go to closing. A lot of pre-closing tasks have to be completed, and we were working with them. We were preparing for Metro, like I said earlier, getting Van Buren Street done, focusing on the bus bays, and queuing up just once those two projects are done and being in position to roll out the Spring Street-Herndon Parkway intersection project. And then, once that's done, pivoting to East Eldon Street, all transportation network projects that are necessary for a functioning Herndon Transit Oriented Core and a functioning Herndon Metro Station. We were also out there getting our financial accolades that we get each year. We won our distinguished budget award. We got our excellence in financial reporting for our comprehensive financial report, and we were still a AAA bond-rated agency. We were talking to our, the bond rating agencies regularly, and there was not a problem in sight with our AAA bond rating. And quite frankly, I still don't think we have a problem in sight, and we'll talk about that more later. We had Parks and Recreation out there doing some great events. The Labor Day Festival was really successful, the Homecoming Parade. We held our first winter market that was wildly successful. We thought it was a rainy, cold day, yet we still managed to get over 10,000 people there. It was a phenomenal, phenomenal event. Slide, please. We were working on the Heritage Preservation Review Guidelines, working diligently on them. We worked on and completed the Bicycle Network Master Plan, the Central Eldon Walkability Plan, which will improve the sidewalks from Center Street up to Main. So right along Eldon Street in that area, we came up with a plan, and we were starting to seek grant funding to fund that plan when we could get to it. Our HR department and the staff, we were out there getting some notable hires in here. We brought in a great director of public works. We brought in a brand-new budget manager, a new risk manager, among many others. I think we had over 100 hires prior to COVID, and that includes some of the temp seasonals at Parks and Rec. But our HR department was processing a great deal of applicants and getting those in and putting them to work. Slide, please. Herndon Police responded over 23,000 calls for service the last year. They conducted over 712 hours of foot patrols. They're out there in the community. Anytime they're invited to community meetings, they go. They attended 17 community meetings last year. They are big believers in youth mentoring. As a matter of fact, several of our officers have been through a certified mentoring training program, and we are committed to Project Hope at Hutchison Elementary School. We did 62 DUI saturation patrols, and our national night out was a very large, well-attended national night out with 13 neighborhoods participating. Slide, please. As we talked about a few minutes ago, my other comments, refuse. Household refuse was about average, about 5,400, 5,500 tons. Single-stream recycling was up a little bit during COVID, but we were out there getting all this stuff done. We didn't miss a curbside collection. And interestingly enough, even when we moved to COVID, unlike other jurisdictions, we didn't miss a curbside collection in COVID. But that is another great statistic coming out of our folks. We were doing sewer man, we were flushing sewer mains, we processed 3,800 missed utility tickets, 355 tons of asphalt. These were just monster numbers for a staff our size, really doing a lot of incredible work. We managed 21 ongoing developer projects and 19 CIP projects simultaneously through the design and construction phases. This is, again, incredible amounts of work for a staff our size. Next slide, please. We were out there inspecting buildings, doing our building code. The DPW supported 98 events in town last year. And if you look at these completed projects, we completed the Shannon Park Trail, the Electric to Carroll Cabin, which was critical for security and safety, Third Street Water Tank Painting and Rehabilitation, the downtown Brick Paver Project on Center Street, Phase 1 of the Town Facility Securities Upgrades. We did LED lighting retrofits in several areas to include the HP parking lot. So again, we were doing a lot of work. This is in addition to all the work we were doing to prepare for Van Buren Street bus bays and those other projects that you all have been dealing with. Slide, please. But the world changed. And somewhere along the way in January... And somewhere along the way, in January of, to March, we started to have to prepare for the COVID-19 pandemic. And the response to the pandemic challenged many in our society. It created enormous stress in all governments and businesses and forced every enterprise to rethink its business models. That included the town. We had to adapt to an environment that continuously changed. The town's government and enterprise fund operations were exactly like every other business in the world. To say that the pandemic completely altered our operating environment and served us new priorities is an understatement. It truly reinvented how the organization operated and provided greater emphasis on leveraging our technology and offering different service alternatives. We took highly unusual steps to safeguard employees to include creative use of administrative leave, telework, physical safeguards within our buildings. And with so much uncertainty in the environment, we heightened communications with our employees to inform them what was going on and to lay their fears and set expectations. And then fiscally, the town was dealt a new economic model that we worked to manage our resources and emerged from FY2020 without tapping into any reserve funds. We developed a novel approach to budgeting and budget management. And the underlying each of these efforts was a myriad of tasks that needed to be successfully performed. And we're going to talk about those here in a few moments. Externally, we worked with our regional partners to ensure that health testing and resources were being deployed to our residents. We worked with our community partners to receive CARES Act allocations that allowed us greater flexibility in our COVID-19 response. We developed new communications channels too and used employees outside of their normal jobs to assist in enhancing those communications. We suspended regulations and requirements on our businesses to allow them to adapt to their new economic realities. We've developed a new model for allowing restaurants to safely maximize their external seating options. And most importantly, we did all these things while meeting our core missions that were related to health and safety. To highlight these efforts, you have to remember the work that was done in the years prior to COVID-19. We had been working to adapt this organizational culture for the last three years. We've been working tirelessly to simplify operations, professionalize the workforce, decentralize decision-making, and promote teamwork. We built and developed a team of creative leaders who exercised ownership over their corner of the organization. And this was critical to the successes we've had to date. Over the past three years, we also updated financial policies, developed a comprehensive capital reserve structure, and funded these capital reserves to a percentage of the general fund that is higher than almost every local government in the region. This level of preparation, both in terms of organizational culture and fiscal preparation, created the foundation on which we were able to perform some extraordinary work since the beginning of the pandemic. Without these efforts and the fiscal resources, I doubt we would have been as successful as we were to this point. So as we looked at things, as COVID-19 began to emerge, the efforts of the town refocused on new objectives that we directed at the organizational effectiveness. And it was focused on our, even our core survival. Slide please. So when we looked at these things, one of the things as we were coming out, the guidance we had to give to staff so they could, in our decentralized way, look at how to get creative. I wanted to give them some principles in which to guide them. And the three principles you see there today were critical to that. And they include meeting our core missions, protecting the town's workforce and preparing the town fiscally for economic uncertainty. Meeting core missions included those items we identified as tier-one services when, back in January, we started to look at the continuity of operations plan and updating it and bringing it into focus for our, it was created about 10 years earlier, but it brought us into focus of where we are today. We made, needed to make decisions that would focus increasingly scarce resources in operations that directly affected health, safety, and welfare of the community. These included placing a focus on police, water and sewer, refuse and recycling, and stormwater management. We established procedures to pause any services that we did not directly or indirectly relate to tier-one services. Once we were adequately resourced to meet the core missions, for the duration of the pandemic, we established procedures to bring other services back online based on established priorities. We then turned to protecting the town's workforce, and that had many components. First was the automatic placement on administrative leave of anyone who was symptomatic, anyone who lived with a symptomatic individual. And in the early days, anyone who traveled to a place where an outbreak was significant. Our approach was very aggressive compared to our jurisdictional counterparts, but the aggressive approach served to mitigate community spread within staff. We also sought to social distance the remainder of staff. Meetings were prohibited. Telework became mandatory for anyone whose job allowed for remote work. Staff who could not remote work but performed tier-two and tier-three tasks were placed on administrative leave until either they could be redeployed to a higher priority set of tasks where their services were brought back online. We began the systematic closure of town facilities, including our parks and golf courses. We engaged in an aggressive communications campaign to inform the public of these service-related changes. We placed enormous stress on our succession plan, especially at the town shop, where we created two perfectly leveled, cross-leveled task units. Each unit had an equal number of skilled and unskilled labor, assistant supervisors who afforded the opportunity to supervise our teammates on one unit while the supervisor was on the other team. We cross-leveraged all skill classes of skills. Having two equally balanced units focused on tier-one services allowed us to place one of these units on duty while the other was held in reserve. These two units were prohibited from interacting with one another. This approach, which was only possible because of a high level of succession planning and cross-training, ensured the town staff would meet its core DPW missions for the duration of the pandemic. This was the critical component that allowed us never to miss a trash day, never miss a recycling day. We had to give up things like yard waste, but we kept the health-related refuse moving, and that was critical. To safeguard against fiscal uncertainty, we locked down spending. All overtime, travel, training, capital projects were frozen. We ceased all hiring except for hiring related to public safety. Temporarily seasonal and part-time flexible positions were released. This disciplined approach is one of the primary reasons that we will close FY2020 with a surplus instead of using the $500,000 in revenue stabilization reserves that we were projecting in April. And Jenny will talk about more on that in a moment. At the height of managing this crisis, we released the town's FY2021 budget on time, per code, but we immediately sought to amend it. We immediately sought to sequester $5.5 million in spending until we could better understand the town's revenue picture. We sought other cost-saving measures to include the town's three AAA bond ratings to support a debt restructuring. And we just worked to buy time for us to understand how the new economic model was going to operate. Slide please. We leveraged technology to aid in social distancing of our workforce, but also serve the town's residents in a safer manner. We examined the mistakes made by other jurisdictions and how they conduct remote council meetings and developed a prototype that you're operating in right now that prevented unwanted disruptions from our councils, board, and commissions and keep us focused on the businesses and tasks that we need to do each, when we get here together on Tuesday nights. Externally, we monitored community health statistics and worked closely with the county Department of Health to increase testing options and social assistance to patients who are not able to easily quarantine. This included multiple regional and state phone conferences on which I advocated for additional services to the town. These regional partnerships led to a seamless receipt of CARES Act allocation from the county. And the ongoing discussions that our county partners and the federal government is providing the town with the expert advice of how these funds may be spent. We also aided our businesses in the form of relaxing the sign ordinance requirements so that restaurants could effectively advertise takeout and delivery services. We talked to every restaurant owner in town and created a webpage that provided details on their delivery, takeout options, phone numbers, and website information. We also worked with the hotels and restaurants to allow them additional time to bring their transient lodging and meals tax returns up to date. Communications regarding personal responsibility during the pandemic is critical. The town used all media at its disposal to message these things. In addition to the website and social media, the town used its roadside sound signboards. We rotated the messaging in both English and Spanish. We produced flyers in English and Spanish, and the Herndon Police hand-distributed them in highly trafficked areas. We also produced posters we asked many retail businesses to put up in their establishments so folks could see them while they were in there conducting business. Slide please. We also had to focus on reopening. Internally, we established a gating system to analyze town services that were paused before we brought them back online. The gating system conducted analysis on five levels. One was compliance. We had to make sure before we brought anything back online that it complied with Governor Northam's executive orders on health and safety best practices as dictated by the CDC. We also did a full-blown financial review on each one of these things. Will this service cause the town to incur additional unrecovered costs? Because we knew we were in a new economic model, we had to be very careful about how we were spending money. So when we were bringing these services back online, we had to understand the financial risk associated with that. We also took a look at human resources. Can this service be performed with current staff? Or do we have to bring in new people to do it? Obviously, the desire is current staff. And we focused on analyzing that to make sure we weren't getting out over our skis with bringing in additional staff that we may have issues with later on. We wanted to make sure that what we were doing did not create additional risk to the town, insurance risk and other risk. And finally, we wanted to make sure that all operating processes and procedures were compliant with federal, state, and town code. And we wanted to make sure they're also compliant with our own internal administrative regulations. So as we were analyzing every service we were bringing back online, we looked at it through these lenses to see, should we bring them back? Everything that has come back online during the reopening has gone through these processes. The system was employed before any services came back online and informed many changes to how we were employing things like sneeze guards, new traffic patterns, guidelines on mask usage, enhanced cleaning protocols. All of these new ways of doing business came out of this review. In some cases, we employed touchless service points to include online payment and registration for the golf course and drop-off and pickup bins for plan review, which had never been done before. The interesting thing, I've been talking to staff, and these are things that we're not going to be able to put the toothpaste back in the tube. So we have to make sure we come up with permanent ways to do this because the new service expectations that are coming out of COVID are legitimate, and we have to be able to meet those. In addition to changing, in addition to changing town customer touchpoints, we reengineered how the Fairfax General District Court and the Herndon Farmers Market operates. Slide please. Externally, we established two outdoor seating request processes, one for when the seating was going to be on town-owned land and one for when the seating was going to be on private land. We worked to simplify and streamline these processes so that we could move a request through in under a day. To assist in this, we also created a centralized point of contact to shepherd all outdoor seating requests through these new processes. All of this, we were doing while we were ensuring that we were meeting all the requirements of the code. And in the case of public land, included the emplacement of jersey walls to protect the safety of diners from vehicles. Slide please. As we move forward, all of the items that I've mentioned tonight continue to this day. An interesting observation is that although these are ongoing activities, COVID-19 management has transitioned from a series of standalone activities, and it's now been absorbed into the routine operations that we conduct all the time. It's woven into the operational fabric that we execute each day. And I suspect it's going to be in the operational fabric from here forward. We continue to experience positive test results and exposures on staff, and we continue to improve our staff protections to include some of the things I discussed earlier this evening with mandating face masks and mandating social distancing in the workplace. Moving forward, arguably, the most important factor for all of us to consider, the council and senior staff, is the long-term effects of the pandemic on the town's finances. And ultimately, the town's services, because they go hand in hand. To give you a better understanding of the data that we're seeing in this regard, I'm going to ask Jenny Tripoli, our Director of Finance, to brief you on our current financial state. Jenny, please take over.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you again. It's been a while.
Yeah, welcome, Jenny. Good to see you, too.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. I want to walk you briefly through the preliminary and unaudited results of FY20. That is our typical caveat because we're not fully through the audit. But I would be very surprised if, especially the general fund numbers, changed significantly. So Jess, slide please. Bill already provided an excellent background of where we were. So the first couple of slides were just a reminder of where we were in March and April and April through May. Especially with the CARES funding, what I want to point out is that when we initially got the funding from Fairfax County, there was no guidance really issued by the Department of the Treasury. Now it's their favorite hobby. Really, a few minutes before this meeting, I received another 19-page update about the financial reporting requirements coming out of the Office of the Inspector General of the Department of Treasury. So the rules keep changing, but as we talked about, if it's gray, stay away. That has been kind of our approach to the CARES Act. Moving into where we went with the budget, again, as Bill mentioned, we appropriated the full $61.1 million budget townwide. That's all the appropriated funds, but authorized only $49.5 million townwide with the $5.5 million Bill mentioned was the amount that was frozen in the general fund. Next slide, please. Again, our revenue estimates were extremely conservative because we had no data. And many of our key revenues are lagged by a month, some of them by two months. So we really had no data, and we were trying to buy time and permit maximum flexibility. Again, as Bill mentioned, there was a lot of spending restrictions and freezing. We deferred a lot of items. It's not something that we would be able to keep up year after year, but we did this in response to this great unknown that was COVID and the economic impact. Next slide, please. So this slide was our original projection back in April, where we thought we were going to end up at about $34.9 million in the general fund, using about $420,000 worth of the Revenue Stabilization Fund. And to that end, we targeted spending to be frozen to the point where we could reach that level without having to take deeper or more permanent cuts to personnel and core services. So on the next slide, you'll see, drumroll, the preliminary and unaudited numbers. Revenues are coming in at about $37.2 million, and expenditures are coming in about $34.9 million. So we were $30,000 under that target in the general fund for expenditures. And that took, that was the town-wide effort. It was the departments cooperating and communicating with each other like they always, like we always do, but even more so. So that's pretty, pretty great, in my opinion. So it looks like, wow, we ended the year with a $2.3 million surplus. Well, what is that? I mean, goodness. Next slide, please. Most of that is related to BEPole, which was due March 1st and came in $1.6 million above budget. The CARES funding, we allocated $1.8 million of the $4.3 million to PPE, telework, workforce protection leave, public safety costs. That's the biggest one. We did get almost $220,000 in state paving grants, which do offset expenditures, but don't forget that we had to defer a significant amount of paving from FY19 into FY20 because of how rainy it was the year before. Expenditures came in at $2.4 million under budget. Again, that was because we froze a lot of things. We deferred a lot of things. We did not do any inter-fund transfers to the CIP fund. We stopped the purchase of three vehicles that hadn't been fulfilled yet. We didn't fund the future debt service, but the Capital Reserve Fund does cover that and had vacancy savings of about $416,000. So one other thing I want to point out with the CARES Act, we are going to put that whole $1.8 million into restricted fund balance. Because when we get audited well after the fact with no context to why we made our decisions, except that we're pointing to the black and white on the Treasury's guidance, if we didn't get it right, we have to pay it back. white on the Treasury's guidance, if we didn't get it right, we have to pay it back. So that's why we're going to park all of this CARES money into restricted fund balance to not be touched at all until we pass the audit. Next slide, please. So I want to give you a look at some of the other local taxes. These are your consumer taxes, basically meals tax, transient occupancy, local sales tax and where preliminarily they ended up. Again, you can see B-Pole was about 1.6 million rounding up above budget. It came in very strong at 5.76 million. Meals taxes came in at 2.8. We originally thought that, our original estimate was maybe about 2.4, 2.45 million, again with no data. So the meals taxes beat that, although they're much lower obviously than expected per budget, which was almost 3.5 million. Transient occupancy tax, we had originally estimated about 1.4 million. It came in at about 1.57 million. Local sales tax, we had parked at about 1.5 million. Sales tax has actually been going strong. It beat budget. Got to thank the feds for the Wayfair ruling yet again because we're getting sales tax from online sales because of that Wayfair ruling. Again, the state allocates sales tax to the counties who then allocate it to the towns based on a triennial formula that includes school age children within the locality. So it's not a straight up, our business has generated this much in sales tax. It's a statewide formula that's then broken down. What I want to point out is that even though dollar for dollar, it looks like meals taxes increased from 19 to 20, but that's because the rate changed. The reality is when you normalize for that rate change, we experienced a 17.8% decrease in meals taxes year over year. July 2020, so the July collections in August are about 28% lower than they were last year at this point in time. Again, at that point, it would be the same tax rate because we're talking FY20 to FY21. The meals taxes for August were due on Monday. We are still processing those. The amount that's been processed so far is about 143,000. That compares to 190,000 from last month. So, but that's only because we're still processing. So don't, don't take that number for August collections in September as final just yet. Sales taxes, again, they exceeded budget by 44,000. They are two months lagged. We received July's payment at the very beginning of September. We just received August payment yesterday and it was about 1.59,000, which is very close to what it was last month. It's a few thousand dollars less than it was at this point last year. Next slide, please. As you, as you can see, of course, charges for services with the closure of Parks and Rec and the seasonality of the, sorry, of the community center and the seasonality of their revenues, summer camps kick up, things like that, we really lost a lot of revenue there with the Herndon Festival not being on. You know, that went down by the full amount of budget. So we are bringing programs, as Bill mentioned, back online in phases as health permits it and as they go through reviews. So we're looking forward to seeing better numbers there as we go along. Next slide, please. This is just a recap of where we were when we did the budget with the revenue assumptions. Now that we're starting to get more data for FY21, we're going to have to retool these numbers. Meals taxes, maybe 50% is too much of a cut, but we don't yet know what impact winter's going to bring. Outdoor seating is not going to be as favorable. If we get a big snow, your DoorDash driver, who I've been keeping very busy, may not be able to make it through the snow, things like that. So it's, it's too soon to call on some of these items. Transient occupancy, I think 76% is probably too low of a cut right now and maybe it needs to go to 90 or 95. So we will keep looking at these things. Bank stock taxes, for example, I received a notification that Wells Fargo was closing one of the branches in Fairfax City. I did not receive any notifications like that for Herndon. So that's good because the bank stock tax is calculated on the branches that we have within our borders, for example. Motor vehicle licenses, those are going to start coming in in October because again, that's when personal property is due and the county collects and remits that $25 per vehicle for us. Sales taxes, maybe 15% is too big of a cut, but again, we know that the $600 per week federal pandemic unemployment expired at the beginning of July, but I believe Virginia applied for the $300 extra. So if that runs out and something else doesn't come along if it's needed, that could impact sales taxes. We already know interest on investments is just going to be next to nothing because rates are at historic lows and are going to stay there. Parks and Rec fees, again, we're still looking at the 50% cut with the projection right now, but hoping to ramp that up as we bring programs back online. So next slide, please. Again, this is just a more of a focus on the other local taxes and the Parks and Rec charges for services. The general fund revenue assumptions that we went into FY21 with that we will keep tweaking as we get more data. Next slide. And of course, last but not least, we don't want to ignore our enterprise funds. These numbers look really fantastic, but it's because we haven't booked all the full accrual entries or hadn't as of the point that this was published. So there's still depreciation expense to be booked and pension expense and things like that. So this, this is not indicative of what the financial statements will look like, but it gives you more of a fund. If the enterprise funds used fund accounting, it kind of gives you a sense of the cash in, cash out. With the water and sewer fund, normally at this time of year, we have about 60 delinquent accounts. At this point, we have about 281 delinquent accounts. The total, when we did the estimate, was about 64,000 versus, sorry, 68,000 versus 24,000 in past due accounts. We're trying to encourage people, get on a payment plan, work with us because we're still not doing turnoffs at this point and won't, you know, for a while. It's probably not the best thing to do, obviously during a health pandemic, but we are keeping an eye on it and really trying to work with our customers to pay something. Last but not least, the golf fund, again, they were closed during a pretty key part of their season, but they have since been going very steadily. There's been pent up demand. Once we book depreciation and pension expense, the loss will increase, but if you look at it again, kind of from cash in, cash out, it looks, that's not so bad all things considered. And FY21, Mike and team have already put up pretty strong numbers. So that's very encouraging. The cemetery fund is healthy. Their revenues are down a bit, obviously. Again, that number will change a little bit with the non-cash entries that get booked, but they are doing well as they often do. So next slide, please. I actually think that was it. I didn't want to leave out the enterprise funds and I am happy to take any questions that anyone might have.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. I even remembered to unmute. Who has questions for Bill or for Jenny? Well, Bill, did you have more coming or is this the end of the state of the town?
No, I just wanted to just close out by saying a couple, a couple acknowledgement words. As we talked a few moments ago, everything that we covered here, literally that is just a flash of what the staff was doing this year. There are 88 pages in that state of the town report that was delivered to you and I want to just recognize that none of this would have been possible without the incredible work of our town staff. And the reason why they're so incredible this year is they showed creativity and resilience throughout the entire pandemic that I have never seen at any point in my career, anywhere, anytime or any of my careers. I've now had three of them. So I haven't seen it in neither one. The management team should also be committed because it was through their leadership. They set the conditions that we can not only survive and see numbers that Jenny was showing you, but we found ways to become better through the crisis. And that, that's a critical point of separation from a lot of other organizations. We were seeking to use this to mold us to be a better organization. I also want to thank Lisa Yates. She has been phenomenal throughout and bringing her many years of government service and that advice to me on a day by day basis has been critical. And also thanking council. You all took the risk of entrusting me with the expanded powers during the COVID pandemic that allowed for us to have greater flexibility, allowed us to have more timely decision making and both of which were, I think, were critical as we moved through this pandemic. And I think I put this in a memo to you all not too long ago, but it was truly a blessing to be surrounded by such incredible public servants. I mean, from the staff to the management team to the council, I think that teamwork, working together is how we're able to do as well as we've been doing during these challenging times. And without a doubt, it made my job immeasurably easier as we were doing these things. So the debt of thanks should go to this council as well as staff. So with that, I will, Jenny and I are here and we will answer questions on either of the two halves of the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. What, what questions do you have for Jenny or for Bill or both? Anybody? Mr. DeCall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Jenny. It was a great presentation, especially comparing to the pre-COVID and post-COVID comparison was very good. I guess lots of government and also a lot of corporate will do the same way comparing how the situation was tiny initially and other aspects before COVID. I think this COVID has become a point of reference for a lot of government as well as corporate reports. Just wanted to ask you a question on base three and base four, when you were doing comparison, especially pre-COVID and post-COVID. Obviously, pre-COVID, we have a lot of development plan, especially the town hall development and many other development plan, but when it goes to post-COVID, obviously we decided more on continuity of COVID. Doesn't mean that we have put anything aside or we're not pursuing any of those activities. Just wanted people not to misunderstand that because they see something in pre-COVID and do not see that post-COVID. Doesn't mean that we are not pursuing, we think we want to clarify that first thing. And then, you know, very proud of the staff, how we handled the situation, handling the situation, whether it's communication, whether it's operation, health and safety of the staff, you know, sequestration of budget, allowing outdoor seating for the, especially the restaurants. So the business kept running and that decision was made within like 24 hours of the application, which was really good. So even Bill can relate to that. I sent a couple of emails, few emails regarding the concerns that needed to be taken care of and even during COVID, those concerns were taken care of in no time. And those residents who actually raised those concerns were really happy and wanted me to, you know, thank the staff, thank Bill and especially DTW for people here that. And thank you, thank you for doing everything. If you want to address that, you know, base three and base four, pre-COVID and post-COVID, even if you don't see what we had in pre-COVID, doesn't mean that we are not pursuing that. Just wanted to clarify if you could also clarify for the record. That's it. And 2.3 million surplus, even with this situation is great. So I'm very happy and thank you, Bill. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Jenny. That's all I want to do too. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to do this.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Bill Ashton, Town Manager, again. Mr. DeCall is absolutely right. There were, we continued with several projects. You are seeing, you earlier tonight had three actions that you all had taken on the Van Buren Street project. That's still moved ahead. We were still working on that in what I called our spare time. Bus Bays was another project that we, we never stopped working on. The downtown, we never stopped working on. It was, it made for some really long days and I used to joke that I would go in and work, be the COVID manager for eight to 10 hours in the office, then come home and be the town manager for another six before I went to bed. But no, we never stopped doing those things, but the focus was on the grant funding. So projects that were externally grant funded, it was our belief that there was an opportunity to get ahead on those things and to, if we hit the gas pedal on those, we might see some savings in construction. We might, we might get some opportunities that we wouldn't otherwise get. And so we did hit the gas pedal. The things that were general fund funded, because of the uncertain fiscal environment, we pulled back on and that was by design. So, but thank you, Mr. DeCall, for pointing that out because that is true. We never stopped working on some critical transportation projects and other projects that were grant funded.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Are there other questions for staff? I'm going to ask my colleagues to reserve comments for once there's a motion on the floor, but do you have any questions for Bill or Jenny about the state of the town? Anybody? Mr. DeLagula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's Councilmember DeLagula. Bill and Jenny, thank you so much for that informative presentation. Not to go into too much detail, but just for each of you at a high level, what stuck out as far as what you learned from all this and what future councils and staff or even the public might want to think about as we kind of structure and restructure through what will be a very challenging time for the town from a budget and certainly the businesses economically. And if you want to think about it and fire us off an email, that'd be fine too, but just curious about what are the top, one or two things that you learned through this whole thing for you that you might want to share with us?
Jenny, do you have any?
Sorry, mute button mania. I, I would like to take you up on your offer to think on it because I have some ideas, but I think that I can give you a better, more informative and supported answer if I think on it and send the email.
Thank you.
Real quick, I anticipated Jenny that you would be that thoughtful and cerebral about it, so I appreciate that.
Now, on the other hand, I'm not going to be thoughtful and cerebral. This is Bill Ashton, Town Manager. No, the moment you said that, and I'm sure there's more to be added once I think more deeply on it, but what immediately jumped out at me was that it's the old adage that every battle is won or lost before it's fought.
Sun Suu, love it.
Exactly. And in this case, all the preparation we have been doing for at least the last three years that I'm aware of and even predating me some of these things to prepare us fiscally, to prepare us organizationally, to get the right people in place with the right, right skill sets as far as being creative and, and, and having an ownership mentality, having those pieces in place made a difference, made an enormous difference because we weren't having to train up and prepare on the fly. We were going into this, it's funny because we had no supply chain issues on PPE and, and sanitizing and cleaning equipment because we were ordering it in February. We were looking at our continuity of operations plans in January before this thing hit in March. And it was, again, this is a talented, a talented group of people running our departments that were ahead of the game. So the Sun Suu quote was reaffirmed in this and that's when you asked that question, that's immediately the thing that came to my mind, but I'm sure there are more lessons to be learned.
Thank you. Other questions for Bill or Jenny? Sydney, Ms. Friedrichs, I apologize.
Friedrichs. So what are you, I know that we don't have a lot of data in yet, but we are. but we are maybe a few months into the new year. What is your biggest worry about our revenue, our revenues? Because I know we've started to see some, you know, not to rain on our delightful parade, but we've seen some businesses, small businesses close, which I think we expected. But on down the line, do you have a feel for, for what you think you might be? I know you said, you know, maybe 90%. I think Jenny said this about transient occupancy taxes and so forth. But what are you seeing or what are you worried, most worried about?
So from my perspective, for example, one thing I didn't mention that I meant to was the first half of real estate taxes has the due date, the expanded due date has come and gone. We've collected about 95%. That's not unusual. The real estate market is really weird right now. The residential market is going gangbusters and the commercial market, which, you know, assessments are based in part on rental income, is probably suffering a bit. Maybe. It's hard to tell because we don't have the day to day data that a regular business would have about its customers. Our data is lagged and it comes in the aggregate. So it'll be interesting, even though real estate taxes, the assessments are this fiscal year, we're going to start the budget cycle for fiscal year '22 fairly soon. Same with the restaurants, to your point, the meals taxes. We don't know what winter's going to bring. Is this going to keep up at this, at this level? Are we going to dip again? What happens if there's a collision of the flu and COVID and additional measures are taken at the state or federal level? Things like that. So it's still, it's still the major unknowns that, that bother me because it's very difficult to. My crystal ball's in the same repair shop as my magic wand, unfortunately. And just like everyone else, this, this makes it, this is a completely different paradigm, as you know. So, you know, I do worry about those things. And I think that we have some creative ideas that we'd like to share with you offline during the budget. One of the reasons that we took the stance that we did with the federal money is federal money comes with a lot of rules and a lot of strings. So if you keep that simple and you keep the feds kind of out of your day to day business, then you, you have room to do more of the things that a town can do with the town's funding. So I think that as we get into the budget process, that we have more data because again, a lot of it is lagged, all of it's lagged. Some taxes come only once a year, sales taxes, as you know, two months lagged, meals taxes, transient occupancy, one month lagged. So we're already behind, so to speak, because we don't know what we're not getting or are getting until that month later or those two months later. So I don't know if that helped at all. There's still just that much uncertainty. The only thing that isn't uncertain is that we're not going to earn very much at all from LGIP. That's okay, in interest income, which is what it is. It's not risky, so.
Yeah, and that's not new either, so.
Right.
What if we were to, what if we were to have a really low, you know, like 20% or 25% of our normal revenues for the year? Would we, this may be a Bill question, you know, how would we, how would we respond, I guess? Because we have, you know, it seems unlikely right now, but we don't know what the sequelae of what's happening now will be.
Right. This is Bill Ashton Town Manager again. To answer your question directly, I think that's going to be a conversation as we approach the FY '22 budget. We are gonna, if we are projecting that level of revenue coming into the town, we're going to have to have some stark conversations on services. And that's gonna, and I think I've mentioned to you all before on this question, I'm going to need, obviously, services are a policy. It's going to be policy input from this body to give to staff what services we need to carry forward in a more austere environment. And then we're going to have to fashion the organization to meet those service demands. So that's one of the reasons why we are keeping a very close eye on the revenues coming in. It's a routine conversation between Jenny and myself. I think she gets tired of hearing me ask the question. So, but we are keeping it very, we're keeping a very close eye on that because as we move into 20, into the 2022 budget prep, that's going to be a conversation. And I think it's a primacy conversation. It's the one that goes first, and that's what services. And then how do we arrange an organization around it? How do we fund that organization and so on and so forth? The one thing we can't do, and we've talked about this before, we can go without pulling maintenance on vehicles. We can go without some of our small capital. We can go without training our people for a short period of time. But we cannot do that forever. And so we have to find ways to get that money back into the mix. And that's going to be a service related question.
At what point during the budget process would you feel like you had enough data to, to start, to start making, to start letting us know that we need to make those kind of decisions? Because at this point, we're what, two, three months into the year, right?
So here's, have you ever taken the Myers-Briggs test before? I'm sure you have, everybody has. This is where the ENTJ meets the ES in Jenny. I'm going to, Jenny's going to say there's never enough data. I need more and more and more because she loves to analyze. At some point, we're going to have to get a general sense of where this is going. And so it's going to have to be six months into this fiscal year. We're going to have to start preparing to then pivot 20. So in January, first thing in January, we're going to be having these conversations. If it looks, if it looks that dire, we're going to start, we're going to have to have those conversations.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry to bring up something so frightening, but we need to think about it.
It's legitimate, and it's something certainly that's on my mind every day. Because it's a heavy conversation. I hope we don't have to have the conversation. But come next July 1, we might have to have a different looking organization than we have today, unfortunately. But we'll take that as it comes.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions for Bill or Jenny? Okay, well, then I will actually move approval of Resolution 20G39 if I could.
I'll second that.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor. Discussion on the motion. I'll just be really brief. I think that now we all know why our town manager has not been able to take off very much time this year. It's been quite a year. I do want to compliment Bill in particular on just some very bold choices that he made as the town manager early on where his counterparts in other jurisdictions were telling him he was a little crazy and, and didn't, didn't really support some of the things that he was doing. But it turned out we, they were the right things. And in particular, I'm thinking about the DPW situation and how that was split. You went through that in your report, so I won't retell it. But we did not miss picking up trash, which sounds like such a, I don't think people would appreciate how important that is until it didn't happen. And it happened in Arlington County and other very well-run municipalities near us. So I just want to thank you for the leadership style that, that you've brought to the table from the first day that you were sitting in this seat and for being, feeling empowered and bold enough to make some tough decisions. And also to look at it, look at the challenges, which are and were many, to try to be better. I mean, I think that you have shared with all of us some ways that we're doing things now as a result of COVID that we're not, we're not going to go back to the old way of doing it. I don't know if you guys, I can't remember if you mentioned this to me or at a meeting, but we're having some of our electrical inspections were happening via FaceTime during the height of COVID. I don't know if that's still happening as much. But, but a great thing about that was they're able to, first of all, they're able to do it. But also, it allowed them to expedite their services and meet with more clients because there was no travel time. So I think it's, it was a tough way to get innovative, but I'm, I'm really proud of, of what you've done. And Jenny's hiding her face, but Jenny, what a year for you. Thank you for everything. Madam Vice Mayor, did you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. One of the things that you touched on, Mr. Town Manager, was one of the new things that happened in Herndon, and that was the winter market event. And a lot of folks may not realize how many German nationals we have in the area because of the facility that got at Dulles Airport and the surrounding area. It was just a lot of individuals in the community that came forward and put that together. And then the town was willing to work with them because no one knew. Maybe it'd be 100 people, but it ended up being massive and a mess. Even, even with the mess and the rain, I was out there. So that, that just shows when you've got people that want to do stuff and they come together, we've got a town staff that's going to work with them to put things on. So I commend you for that. And I hope it can happen again, may not happen this year because of the circumstances. But when the COVID hit, I am so thankful that we had such a professional team. Because when the barn is burning, it's not a time to go have a meeting at the kitchen table and decide how we're going to do things. So thank goodness you guys got together and did it. And the DPW example is a perfect example because, you know, Baltimore is now having some issues just because the cost of their trash is going up because of what I was going, you know, so many people staying home now. But it is such a blessing to have such professional staff. When I talk to other colleagues around the state, within the Virginia Municipal League, it is absolutely amazing. A lot of the, we are the third largest town, and only two of those three have a AAA bond rating, and that's us and Leesburg. So that's another big deal. So thank you, keep up the good work, and I'm really happy that I've been able to work with you.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. McKenna.
Yeah, I just want to echo what's been said in a way. And Bill and Jenny, you did a great job. Bill, you're my fourth town manager. Jenny, you're my third financial manager. And I can tell you that of the 10 years that I've experienced, this has been remarkable. And to be quite frank, the way that this all came about and the way so far everything has been going, it, you know, to make an analogy in regards to even say a movie, it'd be like Apollo 13. I mean, the ship was, we don't know where it was going. It was rudderless, basically. And you guys found a round peg to go into a square hole and, and get it to, you know, again, it still has to come home, but it's a lot better than it was. And the steps you took to mitigate the situations in regards to DPW, which, you know, again, by having them working, obviously saved us, you know, downtime and some other things where we would have to double pay on certain instances, as well as, you know, the projections and the sequestration of the money, I think was absolutely brilliant and, you know, definitely saving us from what can happen. Now, of course, you know, the future, we don't know what it holds. But if it's any indication of what past performance is and the way you've got creative, we, you're very blessed and fortunate, and I can't thank you enough. So hats off to you and thank you. It's been, it's been great working with you, and I look forward to future success.
Thank you. What other comments do we have from council? Anybody? Ms. Friedrichs.
Just quickly, I want to thank you and Jenny, Bill, because your creativity is something that you don't necessarily see a lot of when people are under stress. And I think you guys did a magnificent job, and I look forward to seeing what you will do with the next stress. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any final comments before we call the question? Anybody? Okay. Well, thank you very much. So I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll. There was a motion made by the chair, seconded by the vice mayor. Olem?
Olem, yes.
Thinker's absent. DeLagula?
DeLagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Thank you, sir. Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel? Merkel, yes, and that motion carries. Next up, we have an initiating resolution, which is 20G44. It's a zoning ordinance text amendment number 2001 to change the term heritage to historic throughout the zoning ordinance and additional amendments within section 78 of the Town Code to permit the issuance of certificates of appropriateness by staff to broaden the ability of staff to review and issue certificates of appropriateness and to clarify procedures per Commonwealth of Virginia policy. And I see that Dave Stromberg, our zoning administrator, is here for the staff report. Good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Merkel and members of the council. This is David Stromberg, the zoning administrator. And this is zoning ordinance text amendment number 20-01. And before getting into the details of the text amendment, I just want to clarify that this text amendment is not the historic district guidelines themselves, but it's a necessary step that needs to occur before those guidelines can actually go into effect. Next slide. So staff was directed at the beginning of this year to come up with some language to change the name of the Heritage Preservation District to the Historic District after several residents were attending a joint meeting of the Town Council and the Heritage Preservation Review Board at the end of December 2019. So the text amendment, when it first was drafted, it was really just the name change. It was scheduled for initiation in March of this year, but obviously, due to the pandemic, was removed from those agendas until now. So as I mentioned, the draft language was really limited to just a change in the name. The Heritage Preservation Overlay District would become the Historic District Overlay. The Heritage Preservation Review Board would become the Historic District Review Board. And then we really just went throughout the ordinance to catch and make all of those name changes. Next slide. So one of the main reasons why staff, at least, is recommending the same changes because it causes a lot of confusion for the public. As far as we know, Herndon is the only locality in Northern Virginia and the state that actually uses the term heritage instead of historic. And when staff or the council or the board themselves are asked what the difference is between a heritage district and historic district, the truth is, there is no difference from a regulatory standpoint. They're exactly the same, so why have that confusion in there? Another reason to make the name change is simply to be consistent with the code of Virginia. We've been trying to go through the zoning ordinance and make it be more consistent with state code wherever we have those opportunities. And, but section of state code that gives localities the authority to have a historic district is 15.22306. And in that section, the words that they use are historic and historical. Heritage is not used at all within that section of the state code. Next slide. So while this text amendment was on hold due to the pandemic, the work was still continuing between staff and the consultant to move forward with the historic guidelines. And one of the key components of the new guidelines involves developing a process to allow staff to approve some types of certificates of appropriateness administratively. And again, it's important to keep in mind that the zoning ordinance and any guidelines, whether they be historic or otherwise, that are adopted by a locality, they're separate land use tools. So in order to actually change who is allowed to approve or deny a certain type of application, that change has to happen in the zoning ordinance. It can't only be made in the guidelines. You have to make it in both places in order for it to actually be legal and compliant with state code. Next slide. So under the existing language in the ordinance, the board is the only entity that's allowed to approve or deny a certificate of appropriateness. So obviously, everything pretty much goes. So obviously, everything pretty much goes to the board for review. There are a few items that are simply exempt from needing a certificate of appropriateness at all. And that sort of like skylights on the back roof of your house. And then there are a few pre approvals that are issued community-wide, and that's pretty much limited to residential fences and certain paint colors on residential buildings. So under the draft proposal, staff have the authority to review some types of certificates of appropriateness for the more minor type projects that are recurring in nature. And then all your larger projects, those would still be going to what will be called the Historic Review Board, similar to what they do now. So some of the types of projects that would be eligible for administrative review, we're thinking material changes to a structure, some minor additions onto the rear of your structure that's not necessarily visible from a public right-of-way, certain types of window replacements. And if there's a proposal that doesn't fit neatly into a certain category, then that can be pushed up to board review by staff. And we've tried to draft this language in a way that will allow some flexibility to change over time some of the items that do go to the board review and are reviewed by staff. So we've tried to build that in now, so we don't need a bunch of future text amendments to change what can be reviewed by staff and what can go to the board. Next slide. Another change that we've incorporated into the text amendment is really defining what an alteration is. Apparently, you have some projects that come in, and they're all reviewed as an alteration, but in essence are really a full demolition of a structure and not a full new construction of a structure. And there's really no original piece of the building left. So this draft clearly delineated when a proposed alteration is no longer an alteration. And 49% is what was put in there to be that decision point for what your scope of work is. If it's 49% or less that you're changing, then it's just an alteration. If you're altering more than 49% of the structure, then you have to comply with all the requirements, and it will be evaluated as if you were doing a demolition and if you were doing new construction to the structure. And 49% is used because it's really one of the most common standards that's used in zoning language for pretty much everything. So when you're, when we're determining a, whether something is a primary use or if you have an accessory use that, let's say, is taking up 75% of the building, you can no longer claim that's accessory. That's one of the breaking points that we use. It's also used when you have a non-conforming structure. That's another key area where 49% is the amount that's used to determine whether or not a non-conforming structure has to come back into compliance or if it can remain as-is. Another change that we made was distinguishing between standards and considerations. There are a lot of whether or not statements that are currently in the ordinance right now, and those have been removed from the required standards because they're actually a consideration. So if it is something that is a standard, it was, the language was devised to make it actually read as a standard. This is something you must comply with. That's it. That's what you have to do. And then considerations for how you're actually making that decision, whether or not it's the staff who are making that decision or if it's the board who's actually making that decision. Those considerations, some of them are still in the ordinance, but a lot of those have actually moved into the guidelines, so the public and the board and staff really know how to evaluate a project. Next slide. And so with that, we are recommending that you approve the initiation for this ZODA number 20-01, so it can go to the Planning Commission for public hearing and refinement of the text amendment, and then ultimately back to the town council. So thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. What questions do we have for Mr. Stromberg? Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilman Delagula. Mr. Stromberg, thank you for that presentation. Could we update the information or slides to contain sort of before and after a few examples on how the changes are going to impact the current guidelines or wordings?
Yes, this is Dave Stromberg, zoning administrator. We will certainly have that for the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get some of those images in between the work session and the public hearing tonight for you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else? Ms. Friedrichs, followed by Mr. DeCall.
So this is a resolution sending these requests to standardize the language and activities of the Historic Overlay District to the Planning Commission, right? This is, this is just the beginning. It's going to come back to us with, once the Planning Commission has gone over it.
Yes.
Yes. So, so none of the things that you're proposing, they're being standardized to the state code or, I mean, how did they, are they things that just grew up over time that needed to be fixed? Or can you elucidate that a little bit?
It's a little bit of both. From when the Heritage District was first adopted back in 88, 89, it did deviate a little bit from the state code, which is allowable but causes confusion. So now we feel that it makes more sense to try and get it back to as close to state code as possible in the zoning ordinance. Now, that, again, it's still separate from the actual guidelines themselves that you'll be reviewing at, but when it comes to the zoning text, we try to err on the side of caution of getting it as close to the state code.
Okay. So I guess that's all my question. I'm very much in favor of changing the heritage from, to historical. I find the term a little bit offensive. I know it wasn't when it was first generated, but at this point, it's, it's very upsetting. So thank you for answering my question.
Okay, I think, was it Mr. DeCall?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Stromberg, thank you for the presentation. Just one question. In one of the slides, you know, you're talking about some of the requests can be approved by the staff, and some of the requests actually go to the board for rewrite. So how do we delineate, you know, what gets approved by the staff and what actually goes in front of the board? That's one question I just wanted to know. And another one is, since we talked about the updates on the guidelines, I don't know if it is a question here for you to answer, if, you know, if it is allowed, if we have time, then I wanted to know what's the progress on the update process.
Thank you, Councilman DeCall. We do have the Community Development Director, Lisa Gillarin, on. She was having some technical problems earlier, but I think she can discuss the progress in the guidelines themselves. But I do want to go back to your first question regarding how it's decided or which applications are reviewed. Again, we've tried to structure this in such a way that the ordinance gives staff the ability to do it. And a component of the guidelines is called the Historic District Procedure Guide. And in there, we have a written list of exactly what the staff can approve and what the board can approve. And the benefit of putting them there in the procedure guide is that list can be amended over time without the requirement of having to go back through another zoning text amendment. One of the problems with having very specific lists within a zoning ordinance is any type of change has to go through this three, four-month-long process, and it doesn't make the ordinance very flexible. So with this, we're laying out the basic things of what staff can review or not review. So again, if you're looking to build a completely new structure, staff is never going to be able to review a brand-new house in the Historic District because the ordinance sets that kind of hard line. But if it's ranging from, like, let's say, adding a small addition on the rear of the house would be staff review eligible now. Perhaps in the future, if someone wanted to add a bay window to the side or front of the house, that can be amended within those policy guides and be changed over time without having to go back before the Planning Commission and the council for a full text amendment. Because again, those do take several months usually.
So to put things into perspective, just, I'm trying to understand from the information flow perspective on, I would say, the steps. So a user, a resident, whoever, you know, is asking that consideration is actually applied, and then it comes to the staff, and the staff, based on that procedure, determines whether that is something that can be completed by the staff decision or does it have to go through the board for consideration? Because I would assume that the, whoever applies for those changes or requests may not understand all this process. So their job is to put the request through, and then the staff does the analysis of whether it can be, based on what is written in the procedure, whether it can be done by the staff or does it have to go through the board?
Right. We want to try to get as much information online that says if you're applying for this, this is what we, you will be going through, what the process will be. It'll be a staff process or it'll be the public hearing process. Now, once they submit their actual application for it, then obviously the staff would review it, and if there's something in there that's a little bit different than what they may have originally thought they were applying for, we'll just verify it, be like, okay, this does meet the criteria of administrative review, or it doesn't, and you'd have to go to the board for review. And that would just be part of the normal review process.
You said your answer. Thank you.
Are there other questions? I'd say that fast because I was on mute before. I have a question to clarify. So is, is it the correct way to look at this is that in order to enact some of the things that we want to be possible when we do the rewrite, we have to change our code because right now we can't allow some of those staff-driven items? So that's the real purpose in going through this process. Is that right?
Yes, that's exactly, exactly right. If, even if it was in the guideline for those were written or staff approval, if you don't have that corresponding change in the zoning ordinance, it can't be done.
Thank you. And someone called my name. Was it Ms. Gillarin?
This is, this is Lisa Gillarin.
Okay. Hi, Lisa.
Hello, how are you? I just wanted to add a couple quick items. One, the reason that we would like to be able to amend it over time is really the staff is thinking that as we have more experience with staff actually doing the COAs, the certificates of appropriateness, we're going to want to expand the number of types of applications that the staff can do. And that is one reason not to have a definitive list in the zoning ordinance, but rather to allow us to add to it in the future. The other question I'd like to address is we've received some questions, and I think there was originally some confusion over the zoning text amendment versus the guidelines. And the guidelines are still being worked on. We're expecting those in October. And the reason, and you did, I believe, receive an update from the town manager on Friday regarding the guidelines. And part of the reason that the guidelines have been taking as long as they have been taking, and they have been taking a long time, and we recognize that, is because of the fact that as we were going through the rewrite, we realized that there were some disconnects, one of which was the staff was saying that the staff was going to be reviewing more types of applications, and the consultants growing concerned that we would need to actually be issuing the certificates of appropriateness to do that. And that was not something that we were empowered to do by our current zoning ordinance. And so that's one of the reasons why we're bringing this zoning text amendment to you this evening, as David's been explaining. But we are still working to finalize the guidelines. We're expecting those in October. We're really trying to, I'll say, kind of push the boundary, doing something a little different, a little new than what you see in most guidelines. And that is trying to simplify the process by allowing more and more applications to go to the staff rather than people having to go to the public hearing. When the consultants were here two years ago, they heard from the public that really going to the public hearing, waiting for the public hearing because of the advertisement, that was, that was part of what they felt was a burden. Whereas working with staff, that, that was easier, would be quicker, less time-consuming, less cost involved. And so that's really why we're bringing this zoning text amendment to you at this time.
Thank you, Lisa. Other questions for, for David or for Lisa, since we have everybody here? Anybody? So this is a general item, so I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Motion, 20G44.
Mr. Delagula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We have a motion to approve made by Mr. Delagula, and I will give the second to the vice mayor. Boy, I guess we're excited about this. There's a discussion on the motion. Mr. Delagula or Madam Vice Mayor first?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to commend staff and everyone involved for getting this to us quickly. There have been a lot of people asking about this. I certainly look forward to the sort of rewritten portions. Or again, I think what's going to make it easier for the residents, particularly those that are in the district, are those sort of, I'm calling them use cases, but what it is that we're proposing that's going to be changed or how it's going to impact the wording or any process, I think that's going to be helpful. Certainly not now, but when it goes, gets reviewed and then comes back. I think just having some examples will certainly help communicate this. We want to make this easier. We're doing this to make it easier for everyone, not to sort of pile on the burden that some people perceive out there. So appreciate that and look forward to getting the updates on this.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, it's taken a long time to get here. We had to go through all the time and energy to come up with this money and the budget so that we could get to this point. And then we had all the different community events where the public came in and met with us. So it has been a long time coming, but it's an important area we want to preserve in the town, and I hope that this is going to help keep this going. And this is why people do like to move to Herndon and come to visit. Our historic downtown and the grounding area really gives Herndon that look and feel that people really like when they come here, as opposed to Reston. And I'd like Herndon to keep our own look and not turn into the Reston look. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from anyone? Well, I concur with my colleagues. People always mention the downtown and that there's nothing else like that, the historic part of our town. And it's certainly part of what drew our family to want to live here. And I- And I agree with, I think it was Mr. DeLaGula, who said, "We're trying to make this easier." And that really is the goal. We want to, you know, keep the historical nature of our downtown neighborhoods and business district, but we also don't want to make it a huge burden for those homeowners and business owners to comply. So, and as a homeowner in the district, I'm kind of excited to see where this goes. So with that, if there's no other comments, don't see any, I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Olem?
Olem, definitely yes.
Baker's absent. DeLaGula?
DeLaGula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. And so that motion carries and we look forward to seeing what the planning commission brings back to us. The next item is item number 10. It's another initiating resolution, 20G45, consideration of an amendment to the town's 2030 comprehensive plan to change the 2030 land use plan map for the residence-in property, which is located at 315 Eldon Street, from business corridor to adaptive area residential. And I understand that we have, our senior planner Dana Hyberg is here. He is voice only. And Mr. Town Manager, did you want to start this off or were we going to go directly to Dana?
Well, I can certainly start this off, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that, Bill Ashton, Town Manager. As I mentioned in the work session last week, this is a very exciting project in a lot of different ways. As we mentioned last week, and I'm sure it's going to be covered as we move forward with this project, is that it is a first-generation residence-in, and they're probably on the sixth generation now, that is not going to be a residence-in much longer. And there was an opportunity to redevelop this into a residential project that would include a large component of workforce housing. And this is something that we've been working with the developer, the now property owner, Mr. Wire, who was on earlier tonight. We've been working to try to get to this point to where we can begin the process of allowing this to move forward. It is, goes to a priority that this council has given me and staff to look for opportunities for affordable workforce housing in town. And this presented itself, as we talked a little bit last week, Neville was in a lot of the details as far as how to enforce it moving forward through the life of the project. That was at the fore of our minds. We developed a plan for which we can make that happen. So this truly is an answer to a priority of this body and we are, I'm really pleased that we are going to start this process with an initiating resolution tonight. So, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hyberg.
Thank you. Mr. Hyberg. And I also see that Lisa Gillar is also here and I do want to remind my colleagues while we're getting the IT situation up to speed here, that Ken Wire, who represents the property, is also on the call tonight and will be available for questions. So, Mr. Hyberg?
Is the audio coming through okay?
Yep, I can hear you loud and clear.
Just checking. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So here we go with the slides. So this is how the process starts to initiate a resolution for a comprehensive plan amendment. It would be called CPA number 2001. It's, of course, for the residence-in property, as has been mentioned. Next slide, please. This is what it looks like on the county tax map. It's a singular sizable parcel, south of Eldon Street, west of Hernan Parkway, just north of Grove Street. Next slide, please. So the aerial view gives you a good bit more context. There are 168 units existing at this site. We have access from Eldon Street, also from Hernan Parkway, and also down there where the word "Google" is kind of covering it up, there's actually an access to Grove Street as well. You can see that the property is, that there is the adjacent vacant property just to the west, and then further west, just beyond that, is the building that I think a lot of you know as the atrium building. And then, of course, to the east, we have Hernan Parkway and across the parkways, you can see the Sugarland Run Trail there and the Stream Valley Park area. So the other characteristics I'd just like to mention about the site are, really, you can get a little flavor here of the onsite amenities that exist, the interior courtyards and green spaces, recreation areas and pool and so forth. So it does have those type of features. Next slide, please. And this is the existing comprehensive plan, part of it showing, and the red arrow is pointing to this property at 315 Eldon. Currently, it is part of the business corridor land use designation, which is retail services, hotel, kind of those types of more auto-oriented suburban uses that we have on Eldon Street today. And it's been on the comprehensive plan in this way since 2008. Next slide, please. And I probably should have mentioned the change would be to take it from business corridor to adaptive area residential, which is, we use the term AA-R, and it's also colored orange on the comprehensive plan. So your resolution would initiate the formal comprehensive plan amendment process, would refer the item to the Planning Commission for study and recommendation. The Planning Commission is, if you decide to for this, the Planning Commission is to prepare a plan amendment and they are to submit it to public hearing within 60 days per the code. And now they could continue the item, but they need to bring it to public hearing within 60 days. It's possible they could continue the item or they could actually make a recommendation to the council. Next slide, please. Let's see. The catalyst. Again, I guess Bill alluded to this, but the town council has a commitment to address the affordable housing shortage in the area. We do have a new owner of this aging hotel. This thing came online, I found the zoning approvals came in 1988, and then I think it was constructed along about 1989 or maybe 1990. But it is aging, the owner wishes to repurpose it to residential. They have experience with this type of effort on these properties. It no longer meets the brand standards and so forth, as Bill alluded to. And we could provide approximately 164 residential units. The indications of the owner are that there's interest in providing 55% of the units to be workforce housing, which I think you know workforce housing is a range, sometimes it's called the missing middle, but it's above low and moderate income housing, but typically units range from 60 to 120% of the area median income. So that's workforce. Next slide, please. Additional factors catalyzing this. The appropriateness of the site, as I mentioned on the aerial photograph, the building form, it's pretty logical for residential. It's really got quite a series of outdoor amenities. It's also walkable to a number of stores and services. It's about 1.25 miles from the Herndon Metro Rail Station. It is on a bus route, so a lot of supportive aspects. And repurposing from hotel to residential won't adversely impact public infrastructure. Now, of course, when this gets to the, if you decide to initiate it, when it gets to the planning commission work on this, we will be further analyzing the school impacts, the other public facility impacts, as we always do. So CPA 2101 will support and allow future land use decisions that would implement repurposing to residential. And the details of an agreement could occur through the rezoning process. As you know, we do a number of things through the rezoning process and we have the ability to negotiate proffers and attain commitment to a variety of things. Next slide, please. I did want to, I believe this was the next or last slide, just run through for you the process to convert the property to multifamily if the, if the plan amendment is approved after, if it's recommended by the commission and then comes back to council and if it is approved. The process that would need to happen in order to convert this property to, from hotel to multifamily would be, we would need to amend the zoning ordinance by creating a new variation of the PDUR zoning district. That's the planned development urban residential district that we created with the South Eldon Area Plan. It was adopted fairly recently after the adoption of the South Eldon Area Plan. And so we would need to amend the ordinance to create a variation on that because the existing multifamily zoning districts really don't fit what exists on this site and really wouldn't work well. So next step would be a zoning map amendment, which we call rezoning. And so that would be the opportunity to change it. It is currently zoned commercial services and so would need to go to the PDUR or the PDUR2 or whatever name we would give to this new zoning district. Of course, then you would need construction permits for any physical changes to the interior structures. And if there were changes to building footprint or other site features, which there haven't really been indications that that is the interest at this point, but if there were, a site plan amendment would need to proceed the construction permit. Next slide, please. So that really wraps it up. Your alternatives, of course, are to approve the resolution and go ahead and refer this item to the planning commission. You could continue the item and defer action. We would ask in that case that you provide further direction to staff and the property owner. And so the staff recommendation is to approve and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Hello?
Thank you, Dana. What questions do you have for Mr. Hyberg? I'll start with Mr. DeLaGula and then follow up with Mr. DeCall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember DeLaGula. Thank you for that update. Really excited. And Madam Mayor, did I hear that the applicant was also on the line?
Yes, Mr. Ken Wire is on the line.
I just want to ask, how soon can you start? I'm really, really excited that we have this opportunity here, so I'm going to fully support this. And by the way, I was just kidding, I don't expect an answer, but a timeline would be, a lot of people have asked about this. I put this out there and got a lot of interest, emails, requests, so there's a lot of excitement and, you know, momentum around getting this done. So I just want to say, thank you.
Thank you. What questions do we have for staff or for Mr. Wire? I think Mr. DeCall was going to be next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hyberg, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to be clear. So this resolution is to allow planning commission to initiate the comprehensive plan amendment process, right? We are allowing the board to actually start the process.
Per the code, the council initiates. The planning commission then would take it up, consider it, make a recommendation back to you after they go through a public hearing and their due deliberation, but the code calls for the council to initiate such items.
Makes sense. Thank you. And, you know, I saw in the presentation in some places, you know, the word "affordable" and "workforce housing" has been used in the change of date. For the record, I just wanted to clarify that as well. So are we trying to build a structure for, to support affordable housing? Because I feel like, you know, there is a difference between affordable housing and workforce housing. And based on our discussion, it's like it is for workforce housing, but we have used both terms. So I just wanted to make sure for the record also, we are doing this for the workforce, the 55% of the units, it's going to be workforce, not the affordable, right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Yeah, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you. What questions do we have? Madam Vice Mayor, and I think I saw Ms. Friedrich's hand. Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Hyberg. How does, this is Olem speaking. How does this change or is it similar to the property that is behind the H mark, the old giant shopping center, there was a business development next to Four Seasons? And that's going from a business and this is going from a hotel. So how much difference is that?
I suppose it's definitely a parallel. We just kind of look at the particulars and so, you know, it's a different type of existing use and the goal is really, it's really more of a repurposing in this case where as the redevelopment of the property that you referenced, which I think now is going to be by Stanley Martin and called Park View, no, Park Place, Park Place, I believe that's going to be the name of it. But that's really where you had a outmoded, early 1980s, low-rise office development, repurposing into mainly townhouse residential. There are some two-over-twos within that. So it's general similarities, but the specifics are quite different with total redevelopment, I guess, versus more of a repurposing in this case of the residence-in structures really just being reused and so forth. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. So that also means we're going to see it a lot sooner than what we're going to see with the other office complex, because it's got to be totally redone. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Friedrichs.
Hi. Sorry, I had to move in between because I was running out of power, so the background is different now. So I just want to clarify something. This is not, well, first of all, very excited about this as I think we all are because this is something that we've been asking or looking for, an opportunity to support for a couple of years, needing workforce housing. What impact, and this might be a town manager question, there's no particular financial impact on us, right? We're just, as a town, this is a commercial activity with us possibly giving some sort of increase in density or something in exchange for workforce housing. Am I right about that? Am I right about that?
There is a potential for some impact to finances. This is, by the way, Bill Ashton, Town Manager. Obviously, this is one of our non-hotels, so if it comes offline, the transient lodging taxes associated with it would also come offline, assuming that hotels return to normal at some point in the future. That said, however, when you have a first-generation residence-in that isn't meeting the standards of the brand, that tells me that the flag is going to change. So, what's it going to be if not a residence-in? So, we're not sure. We're going to take a hit there, one way or the other. So, when we looked at this, we saw a potential also for it to hold its, to do better in the commercial real estate assessment space. We saw some offsets there. The total, the one-for-one analysis that we would have to do is hard to stipulate because of the potential changing of the flag on the brand, because that's an unknown as to what that would be.
So, the cost to us is mainly the change in tax?
Transient lodging.
Okay. And I'm aware from, that there was, there's been some issue with how the financing on this property worked for the hotel, and it's always been, although a very nice location to stay, it's always been quite a tricky situation for the owner, so I'm glad to see it's changed hands and they're really considering what the best use is. But my other question is, why would we have not, there's no residential in that area except for potentially this residential? So, is there some concern that I'm not seeing that, why we wouldn't want residential in that part of town? Because it looks ideal to me. It's across the street from the Sugarland Run area, so there's bike path, there's paths all over the place, there's lots and lots of commodities available in the area, but it's not a residential area. Is that going to change the character in any negative way?
Bill Ashton, Town Manager, again, I'm going to allow Lisa Gillor in a second to answer this from a zoning best practices framework, but it did strike us, it was one of the first things when this proposal was first brought to us that we had to take a look at, that is a commercial area. We wanted to make sure this use was appropriate there, because it isn't contiguous with any other residential area. But one of the elements here that we can minimize is related to the council's policy desires for workforce housing. And that played into the decision-making process as we were looking at this as well. But Lisa, can you shed any more light on the zoning best practices side of that question?
Certainly. This is Lisa Gillor, and Director of Community Development. Instead of looking at it from a zoning standpoint, I think I'll look at it first from the, from the background of land use in the town along that area. And that, of course, is one of our primary commercial corridors. It's also a gateway into our flex office space area, and historically, those areas have been very important to our tax base. Hotels have liked to be located in that area due to the fact that you have business travel, they're convenient with the various types of services along Eldon Street. So, you do have there a type of development that has been very, very good to Herndon to help us keep that nice, balanced tax base that we speak of frequently. Now, from a location for residential, I don't think this would be a situation that we would be promoting and recommending if it did not include the workforce housing element. That's really what drew our attention to this particular concept. And it's also, the idea of repurposing a hotel for residential, I think, is something that we would not necessarily recommend with other forms of hotel. This particular development is such a unique development in its form. It has a very residential form, as Dana has said. It also has the outdoor space, the outdoor amenities. You can see it very easily transitioning into a very comfortable, homey sort of residential development where people, be they individuals or families, are going to be relatively comfortable living. And for that reason, again, that's one of the reasons it was of interest to us from a land use perspective. I also mentioned the fact that really there are some apartments not too far away. You do have the Dwoskin Apartments just down the street, heading north on the Herndon Parkway. You also have the Crestview Townhouses just behind the BB and T Bank. Now, the nice thing, I think, and one reason this will be an excellent location from an urban design standpoint, is the fact that it is going to be very walkable to Safeway, to the Herndon Center, which has a lot of restaurants, it has grocery stores, of course, Sprouts and Mom's. And so, I think it's probably a very convenient spot for residential. We don't want to lose our entire business quarter to residential, of course, but you can think of this as not too different than the Van Meter apartment across from the Marketplace Shopping Center on Eldon Street, and how well that fits in, because you do have families who live there who benefit from being able to walk. They may not have two cars in the family, or they may not have any car. They rely on the bus, excellent bus connections in this location. So, it's a little different having residential in a kind of a standalone situation, but again, I think because of the form, because of the services, and the residential being not too far away, we think it's a good fit.
Yeah, I agree it's a good fit. I am concerned when you compare it to Van Meter, because that is not a mixed, it's not a mix of workforce and low income and standard. I'd like to say quality product.
I agree with that. I meant that from the interaction between having the residential right there in the commercial quarter, being able to walk to the various services.
Okay. All right. Thank you. This is very exciting, and I appreciate your answers.
Thank you. Are there other questions from my colleagues? Mr. DeCall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One more question. Thank you. I definitely support this project and very excited for that, but my question is, so, since we're talking about affordable housing, how do we make sure, process, or let me rephrase my question, how do we make sure 10-year, 15-year, 20-year down the line, those still remain affordable? How do we make sure? Do we have any process to do that, or how do that happen?
I am having trouble hearing your question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. DeCall, your audio is a little...
All right. Let me get closer to the audio then. Okay, is that better now?
I think it is. Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. My question was, you know, I'm very excited for this project, and I'm totally for it. My question is, since we are talking about workforce housing, which is very dear to me, and I'm supporting myself as well, how do we make sure 5, 10, 15-year down the line, those units still remain affordable? Is there any mechanism or that we ensure the affordability, you know, part still remains that's my question?
Yeah, I would say absolutely, and through the details of an agreement that would need to be worked out through the rezoning process, probably what the town would be seeking would be a long-term commitment, such as 20 years minimum, possibly 30, and those are typically the type of commitments that are sought with the Fairfax County Affordable Dwelling Units Program, so that, you know, there really is a long-term commitment, and, you know, it can be enforced through that agreement, and there can be monitoring of the income limits that are established and so forth.
And this is Lisa Gillor, and again, I'd like to add to that, this is something that we've been looking into. Dave Stromberg, from a zoning standpoint, has been looking into, and we've spoken to our counterparts in Alexandria, who have worked on quite a few affordable and workforce housing developments. And what we would be looking at here is really a, as Dana said, it would be an agreement through the rezoning where the, and again, these are rental, they're not for sale, where the leasing authority, the leasing agent would be keeping track of the data, the necessary data, and would be sharing that with the staff. We wouldn't, of course, receive personal information regarding the tenants, but we would receive confirmation that they did meet the income standards, levels, and it won't, we do not believe that it will require a great deal of effort by the staff, that's always one concern. If you're tracking something like this, you want to make sure that you're not putting yourself into a situation where you would perhaps need to have additional staff. This looks like it's probably a very good process. Alexandria has had great success with it, and again, the details will be at the rezoning.
Okay. Thank you. I know that we do have Ken Wire on the line, and if I could ask a question of him, and I'll try to drag it out a little bit while we get him set up to speak. I'd be interested in learning a little bit more about, you know, how this project came about, and I think I recall last week hearing that Marriott has done other transformations like this with their hotels in other states, and I don't know of any projects personally nearby, but maybe I'm not in the know. I'd just like to hear a little bit more about what you're thinking and why this project was interesting to you to take on.
Sure, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Ken Wire with the law firm Wire Gill. With me this evening, he has an attendee, is Peter Kleblot. He is the principal with the Pinker Group. The Pinker Group bought the property in February of this year, which, as we all know, was a different time. They purchased the property knowing it was aging, and we had an idea of affordable housing, and as everyone laid out tonight, the facts of the property almost dictate the solution, its form, its location, its size, and the ability to convert it. So, the Pinker Group bought it with the hope that putting together a strong affordable housing proposal with majority affordable housing workforce units would be something the town would consider. So, this is not, to be clear, a Marriott brand, this is a Pinker Group, their equity, they own the property, and they are funding this. And I want to be clear that your discussion tonight has been great, because I tell my clients and the community, a comprehensive plan is an invitation to go do something. Not saying we're going to approve it, it's saying this is a good idea, keep working on it. So, if you were able to find a decision tonight to recommend initiation of this, this would be great. I think there's two phases. There's a discussion on the comp plan, how it works, but then I think that the nuts and bolts, what Ms. Gilloran brought up, will be brought back into rezoning. But I think when we're done, you'll see a project that's majority workforce housing, and we're actually not requesting any town funds. I've done eight affordable housing projects, or not affordable housing, conversion projects in Northern Virginia, and usually you're talking 5% or 10% affordable unit to workforce, or you're requiring the locality or nonprofit to put in a ton of money. But here, because of the uniqueness of the site, and the fact that we're able to work with the existing structure, it really dictates the solution. So, if you can't tell, I'm very excited. Peter Kleblot's very excited, looks like you all are. We look forward to getting your support for this and working with Lisa, Bill, and their staff to bring this project forward to reality.
Thank you so much for that. Does anybody else have a question for Mr. Wire? I think I see the Vice Mayor's hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wire?
Yes, ma'am.
Was the Pinker Group or yourself in attendance of the Metro Monday where they were talking about housing on the Silver Line?
I'm going to text Peter right now. I'm not sure if we're able to bring up Peter, Madam Mayor. I know he's an attendee, I don't know if he had to reregister, he could answer the specifics. I was not. I wasn't aware if Mr. Pinker...
Oh, okay. That's fine. And are you able to disclose some of the places that you, that they have worked on in Northern Virginia?
Sure, sure. So, I'll give you...
House groups.
Sure, I'll give you two broad categories. So, Peter is working for a private entity, of which he's one of the principals. On his private time, he's the chairman of the board for the Alexandria Redevelopment Housing Authority. They own, as a public entity, several hundred public housing units in Northern Virginia. So, as chairman of that board, he's dedicated a ton of his personal time to making sure those deeply discounted affordable units are managed within the city of Alexandria. I serve on a workforce housing group in Alexandria and have done simple conversions, but frankly, none have had a percentage of housing this big, which is a testament to sort of the Pinker Group's approach to this and desire to make a meaningful statement. So, I could follow up with Lisa Gilloran and give her a list of projects, but as an overall, that's Peter and I's experience here in Northern Virginia.
That's right. You.
Thank you. And Ken, I appreciate you thinking that I have the technical capability to elevate someone to a panelist, but we have a great IT department that makes us look as good as possible, and we have elevated Peter to be able to speak if he would like to address that question. We'd love to hear from you, Peter.
Good evening, and for the record, this is Peter Kleblot with the Pinker Group, and appreciate the opportunity to not really appear, but certainly speak before you this evening, and thank you for your consideration of this project. Ultimately, what we're trying to achieve here is the ability to serve the community more than anything else, the world in the town of Herndon, and we're able to do that because of, as Ken mentioned, the nature of the product and also its condition. So, I think as the Town Manager mentioned, this is a over 30-year-old hotel, originally built as a residence-in. It's a Generation 1. We're now on, I think, Generation 10, and as a result of that, it was originally built to look like housing, garden-style apartments. And so, we were able to, I think, as also was mentioned earlier in this meeting, the property had fallen on a little bit of tough times. We actually purchased the property from the previous lender. So, the owner of the hotel had given it back to the lender, and we purchased it from the lender, so kind of a distressed situation, if you will. And our ability to buy it at that level is what allows us to be able to bring forth a proposal to you tonight to try to, to at least initiate the opportunity to bring some workforce housing to the town without asking the town for any funding or financing.
Thank you. Any other questions for our staff or for the representatives here for the property? Okay. Thank you all for being here and for going through the slog to get to this 10th item on our agenda. We appreciate the time. So, with that, if there are no more questions of council, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move on to 20 G45 approval.
Madam Mayor, I second. This is to be upheld.
All right. Discussion on the motion.
Madam...
Yes, yes, sir.
This is Councilmember Delagula. I will defer to Councilmember DeCall if he wants to take the first motion. I will second his motion. Sorry, I didn't know he was going to chime in.
Okay, I will make that change. So, a motion made by Mr. DeCall, seconded by Mr. Delagula. So, Mr. DeCall, would you like to speak?
That's perfectly okay. I can second that, so I would defer that back to Mr. DeCall.
Okay. Stop being so nice, or I'm going to give it to Sheila.
Well, in that case, let me speak to it. Again, I think I want to thank everyone, certainly on council, but certainly the applicants and staff. We asked, and lo and behold, something came forward on housing. I think this is critical... came forward on housing. I think this is critical as we continue to grow as a region, and certainly as a town, that we take all types of product into consideration. Certainly not decimate what's been established here, but certainly add a uniqueness that I think only Herndon can find here, homes for everyone. So fully support this. I'm really excited. That's why I kind of asked, when could they start and deliver? But I get this is going to take some time, and I'm fully behind it. So thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion. Mr. McKenna, followed by the Vice Mayor, and Mr. DeKalb.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate it. And I just want to say, I really appreciate staff, everyone's hard work on this. And there is actually one more person I want to thank, and it's someone who happens to be my wife, Melissa McKenna. She did a lot of work, you know, setting this up. And Ken and Peter, you know my wife. Her former name was Melissa Jonas. She took my name, and then as soon, you know, before she did that, she stepped down from being Planning Commissioner. You know, again, understanding how real estate works and things of that nature. Just really proud of, you know, the work that everyone did on this to bring this together. This was something that was definitely, you know, this council and also the prior council. I know my wife had a meeting on the 5th of September and the 18th in regards to affordable housing during a work session, which was really well received. And I think that sent the genesis forward so that we can do those things. So I do want to thank everyone on council for their enthusiasm. But it would be remiss if it wasn't for the staff and the Planning Commission for their work. And, you know, my wife says hi, you, Ken, and Peter, and I hope that you're all well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Olem, and then followed by Mr. Dekalb.
So this is really exciting. It's almost like the stars were aligned as this property aged and was going down and wasn't being as used as much, and the COVID set in. This is just perfect timing. And it's going to be a win-win for everyone. I know when we redeveloped over on Center Street and the corner of Nash years ago, it was something that needed to be redeveloped. We got the towns in there. It's a wonderful workforce housing development over there. So this is going to be another boon for the workforce in Herndon. That went in in 2002, right when I moved to the neighborhood I'm in now. So looking forward to seeing this happen.
Thank you. Mr. Dekalb?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo everybody who spoke because I am really excited for this project. We just talked about, we were just talking about affordable housing, workforce housing. With the premise that how the housing is going up in Northern Virginia, and how importantly it is to have those housing options in our region. And now we have one part of it. So hopefully this goes well, and my full support to this. And thank you. Thank you for bringing this topic. Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Friedrichs?
One of the very last opportunities I had to go to a public meeting before COVID struck was a housing challenge that was held in, at George Mason University. And we talked about all kinds of different ways of working with different entities on developing workforce housing and affordable housing, all kinds of different things. And I kept going to the town manager after that because everything was kind of stopped and saying, any news? Anything coming up? And when, I was so shocked and surprised and pleased when he finally said, I've got at least one thing, you know, commercial coming up, and possibly one other project. So this has been a long time coming, as Mr. McKenna has said. And, you know, the time is definitely right. Cost of living in this area is quite high. We need this sort of unit for our neighbors and friends. So I'm excited about this. I hope it's successful, and I look forward to seeing what comes out of the Planning Commission once we initiate it.
Thank you. I concur with my colleagues. And I think that in addition to this being a creative project with, you know, a new owner who is very invested in affordable and workforce housing, given his situation in Alexandria with the Housing Authority, also being a smaller jurisdiction, I think we can be more nimble and take on some things like this. It would be more difficult in a larger place. And I think it also really speaks to our good relationship with the county because Ms. McKenna is also, she is still currently on the Fairfax County Housing Authority as the vice chair. And that relationship has really benefited us in so many ways. And so I appreciate the work that the town and county staff did with the Housing Authority to sort of vet this process and get it in front of us so that we can make it happen. Because I think that someone said the stars aligned, and I do think that's true. Like, this is an aging property, and we have other aging properties in the town that we certainly wish something wonderful would happen, not too far from this property. So it's nice to see one of those aging properties get a nice facelift and really bring a benefit to the town that is very needed. So with that, I'm going to clarify that the motion was made by Mr. Dekalb and seconded by Mr. Delagula. And if there's no further discussion, I will call the question and ask the clerk to please call the roll. Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker is absent. Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
Dekalb?
Yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel? Merkel, yes. And that passes with flying colors, and we look forward to seeing what comes out of the Planning Commission. Finally, we have reached the consent agenda, which includes a resolution to change our meeting for the Town Council Public Hearing to October 13. An ordinance to appoint members on the Police Supplemental Plan Administrative Committee to ratify the emergency extensions of our continuity of government operations and the license pursuant to, oh my goodness, what is this? Oh, the Ahmed Lot. So is there a motion for the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am, Madam Vice Mayor.
I move approval of the consent agenda. Olem?
Is there a second?
Second, Friedrichs.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Ms. Friedrichs. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. Olem?
Yes, Olem.
Baker is absent. Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
Dekalb?
Dekalb, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel? Merkel, yes. So that motion carries, and that concludes our agenda this evening.
Madam Mayor, seeing no other business, I move we adjourn. This is Olem.
I second.
This is the call.
Okay. It's motion made by Ms. Olem, seconded by Mr. Dekalb. And I just wanted to say, before we call the question, that next week is the 5th Tuesday of the month. So our next meeting will be on October 6. So we'll see everybody in two weeks. And I will ask the clerk to please call the roll on our adjournment. Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker absent. Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
Dekalb?
Dekalb, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
And Merkel? Merkel, yes. Thank you, everybody. We stand adjourned at 9:58 PM. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Be safe out there.